All right, Dan's here, so let's get started. Thanks for joining us, folks. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, so we had our roll call, right? We know everyone's here except for Joe, right?
From what I can tell, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, first things first, do we have any community comments?
No one, there's nothing in the chat.
Okay, all right, we'll move forward. Okay, so starting off this evening is Mr. Ward with the superintendent report.
Yeah, so it's only been a few days since we last spoke. Just wanted to provide a couple of things about reopening to start. So we're now in the ballpark of 85 requests for remote learning for the first 10 weeks. I know that I have not checked that since yesterday afternoon, but that's where we were. Mr. Ratty and Mrs. Jones and I have all been looking at it. That information has also been shared with the counseling team now, which I had not done previously. That would be my error, but they're coming back to work now as we prep for the back to school. So I shared that today with them, so they have full access to that list as well. I wanted you to know that. Other reopening update information, we've had, we've been having some staff meetings. Sam's had one with the middle high school staff, and there's Joe. Toby, if we can just mark down, Joe came in at 5:35. So Mr. Ratty, sorry, Mr. Ratty, for using your first name there, but he's had, and he had two, I think, with the six through 12, one during the day and one in the evening, and the same for the elementary school, one during the day and one in the evening, which were well attended, a lot of feedback about things, a lot of questions, a lot of answers, and still some work to be done for he and I and Mrs. Jones to have everything ready to go for the beginning of the year. Additionally, we had a meeting yesterday. It was just over two hours with a reopening committee of folks who had volunteered from the buildings. So we had support staff and teachers on there along with administrators. So I wanted to let you know that we are still working to finalize everything, but we're doing our best to put the pieces together and still feel confident at this point about our reopening plan. So I wanted to share that. Staffing update, you're going to see a couple of appointments tonight for science. We are still working on nurses, a nurse. We do have applications. We have been interviewing people. We do have a person that we, we have multiple people we do have to do with the job for us. We have one more individual that I'd like to speak with, so we are going to have to have a meeting, another meeting to appoint a nurse sometime before our September 14th meeting, obviously. So I don't think we can schedule that tonight because I don't know when I'll have that appointment for you, but I'm hoping that it's next week and it would be a short meeting, really just to conduct that one piece of business. We also, we're working at the same timeframe with a special education, appointed by a special education position. We expect to have somebody to appoint for that next week. You can see the appointment for the principal on your agenda, and the other is we are going to have to talk about the CSC chairperson, and we need to have a conversation in the executive session about how to, how we're going to structure that job and how it will affect the individuals that already work here in the school districts. So without saying much more about that, but we're getting, we're getting close. We do have, they're not on the agenda tonight because I just received it, I think it was yesterday. We are going to have a resignation or two that we're going to have to work through as well. But that's going to happen, and it happens in a lot of schools. It's happened in a lot of schools right now as people are making that final shift to new jobs or as people are making their final decision about if they're able to resign or retire rather than come back and be in the school system the way that it has to operate now due to the pandemic. So it's not something that's just happening here. Certainly, Fort Edward has some other hurdles that we're trying to get over in addition to the pandemic, so that also plays a part in that. But that's, I just wanted to update you on that because I know folks are very concerned about the staffing, especially the nurse. We're on it. We're talking to people, and we're going to have somebody in place for the beginning of school, and that's exactly how it looks right now. So we'll be talking about having an appointment next week.
Great. Any questions for Dan on that stuff? Okay, moving on, no reports this evening. I just want to ask one question. I know the last time Craig was on, school's looking great. Had a couple of more things he just had to, you know, take attention to. How's that progress going with the buildings and grounds? We're all good and ready to go?
Yeah, so we're still, like I said, we're not, we're not, we're not done yet because we're still moving. We're still going to have to move some furniture and things around, but he's on the call. I can see him there. But as of right now, we don't have any huge hurdles. We still have, you know, the PPE we need, the chemicals we need, the equipment we need, and the staffing that we need as of right now.
Great, perfect. Okay, next up, discussion items. Dan, I guess you're going to lead us on that, too?
Yeah, I'll start the, I'll start them both, but the New York State funding, I just want to put it out there for a discussion for the board, and maybe it's just a short discussion, but we all have heard now from Charlene, and if you're, if you're watching any news outlets, and also I provided some information by email to the board, that New York State has, the business officials of New York State are telling school districts to prepare for at least a 20% reduction in all state aid payments to districts. As many of you know, Fort Edward relies heavily upon state aid. We have over an $11 million budget. Our state aid is over $7 million of that $11 million budget, and 20% is roughly $1.5 million, actually just under $1.5 million. So we are, that is, that is a fantastically tough hurdle for us to deal with, and it looks like it's going to come to fruition. At least we're being told to prepare for it to come to fruition. And the first of those is the reduction to the pre-K aid, which we discussed before, and we received a letter on the pre-K that it will be reduced by at least 20%. So I'm expecting, and so is Charlene, that we're going to see more letters like that from the state to, here, we're going to reduce it by at least 20%. We don't have those letters yet from the state saying so, but we're being told to prepare for that, and so is every school district statewide. So I just wanted to open it up for thoughts on that, and I know the thoughts aren't going to be great, but I don't know how that discussion will take shape, but we need to talk about a little bit how the board thinks we might go about addressing that or any ideas that people have. Would be a great time to share them.
Mr. Ward, before you move on to that, what about last year's aid? I know that there was some discussion, maybe that we did not get all the aid from last year. Is that true?
Yeah, yeah, so there's still, to my knowledge, Todd, there's still some money from last year that has not been paid yet. Part of it was, I think part of it was school nutrition funds, but I don't have an update on that from before, but to my knowledge, that has not come in yet.
Okay.
I can, I can, I'll follow up with Charlene on that.
Yeah, she did say that in the near future she would let us know how last year ended, but she's waiting for all that. Okay, thank you.
Dan, when did the aid runs come again? So when are we going to receive that check that's 20% lighter?
Yeah, so there's multiple, there's multiple checks that come throughout the year. I don't have, I don't have the schedule memorized, but we're already, our first check is going to be 20% light in a couple areas. One of the largest ones that we have to be concerned about is our building aid. That's, that's one of our larger numbers. I can, I can ask Charlene for a schedule if they've released a new schedule of payments and when they're going to be out, but the division of budget has not been releasing all the normal information. They really only released, in my opinion, the information on pre-K aid because schools started talking about canceling their pre-K programs.
So, I don't know how to answer this question, I guess, but so there'll come a point where we have our expenditures that we know we have, and the money that we use to pay those things don't match up. So when do we expect that to happen? I know we talked mid-year that that might be something that we have to worry about. I mean, so we look good for the opening of school? We look good for the second semester? I mean, how's, how's that going to look?
Yeah, so if we just, if we just go on, I can use, I'll use kind of an easy example. So our payroll runs, runs around $400,000 or so, give or take, right? Depending on what extras we might be paying out, and there's a lot less of those extras this year because of the reduction or the elimination of athletics and extracurriculars. So if we're going to be 1.5 million short, figure on four payrolls, that's two months. So say we're going to, we're going to be out of money around April. And that's, that's a simple way for me to kind of give an illustration of how it will work. And the difference being for other districts is they may have, you know, several million dollars in reserves or several hundred thousand dollars in reserves. We're not sitting in that position. We liquidated a lot of reserves to fund this year's budget and to pay like our tax reserve last year to help reduce the amount we had to borrow to pay back Washington County. I have been asked to get a, to get a cash flow together to share with the GOSI superintendent, Jim Dexter, because it has never happened where a school has run out of money before, and there are no answers from the Department of Education nor the Department of State on what happens when a school district runs out of money. And we have asked, and actually I've asked Chris Lynn Chan to join us in executive session tonight to talk about her research on the subject, and that's protected by a client eternally privileged. That's why it's going to occur in executive session this evening. But as, as the board knows, I've shared some information that there is no air, there's no answers to this point. We're being told that it doesn't happen, and when it happens, they'll tell us what's going to happen. And that's not helpful for us running a school district, obviously.
Now, Dan, in past years, I know we've taken out bans, rans, and tans, but in terms of, they say their revenue anticipation note or the tax anticipation note, would the banks not even go down that road with us based on where we are standing? And you must have looked into that, the tax anticipated notes?
Right, so, so, yeah, the, the, the short answer to that is, is no, they would not go down that road because you're, you're, you're borrowing on revenue that, that may never come. It isn't like you're guaranteed that you're going to get your state aid this year, but you need money to get through September, so you do a revenue anticipation note, and you borrow the money knowing you're going to get it by June, you'll have it to pay back. Right now, there's no guarantee that that revenue is going to come. So that's, that's been the advice of bond counsel, and I was seeking that advice as far back as last April, May, June, that there's nothing, there's nothing, we're not anticipating anything to borrow against, so you can't do so. I have posed the question to the powers that be, if we get to that time when we're running out of money and we prioritize what we're going to pay, what some of those ramifications might be, and we're just, we're going to have to wait to hear back from the Department of Education on those. You know, if you have to make a choice between paying this or paying that, what are the ramifications of that decision? If you have to make that decision as a board, we want to know, you know, how that affects the following year or the year after.
So has there been any discussion about this possibly becoming not quite this 20%? If there's like federal aid relief coming to the states, is that like kind of the gist? Like the states are kind of waiting on some federal aid so then they can kind of adjust their budgets, or is that not even a thing?
Yeah, so, so some discussion, some discussion on that occurring, yes, absolutely. Nothing in stone, and unfortunately, it seems like that maybe the release of the next federal aid bill might be waiting for an election to occur, and maybe not, but that's, so that's speculation. It certainly, it certainly seems like that could be true, though. But the, the state is asking for the federal government to fill in that hole, right? That's what they're asking. The one part we have to be cognizant of is that when the federal government filled in the hole last time, they also put a lot of strings attached to that money. So if they fill the hole in again, there could be strings attached to that money again. And again, that's speculation, but that's what's happened, you know, that's just what happened to us in those, those most recent aid runs. They came out with the CARES Act money where $188,000 was restored, $188,144 was restored by the federal CARES restoration, but now there's a grant application you have to fill out to access that money, and it's supposed to be used to supplement, not supplant, what you would normally have in your general fund budget, which unfortunately, the state took $188,144 away from our general fund aid. It doesn't work well for us when we don't have a reserve to tap. The other is they did pass legislation that allows school districts to borrow money from their own reserves and pay it back with interest over a five-year period, but we don't have the money in reserve to fill the hole that we're talking about we would have with a 20% reduction. Did that answer your question, Christina?
Hey, Dan, looking, since we're in a contingent budget and looking at the cost analysis you had for just the pre-K program, you wouldn't have extra money to offset the difference with the aid cut, by the looks of that graph?
Yeah, so what I would say is that everything you add means we have to make an equal reduction someplace else. So generally speaking, yeah, we don't have that money to fill in from anywhere unless you say, yeah, we, we want that program to run, and we want to take that money away from this, this program over here or this over here to balance that out, because at the very best, right, we have, we have the budget that we have. Even if the federal government gives us that $1.5 million back, we have the budget we have, and we didn't have an extra $24,000 in that to run something if the aid doesn't come in. Based on our projected budget, you know, always costs, costs could come in lower, costs could come in higher at any time. We all know that when we're making a budget, we're hoping that our budget holds true, but if, if we have an unpredicted cost come in, and we've had, you know, the purchase of all the PPE and stuff like that come in, and it's not tens of thousands of dollars, but it's probably approaching, probably approaching $10,000, between, I'll say between five and 10 right now, and we're hoping that something else comes in lower to account for that because we haven't made any adjustments to programming or any other costs to offset that.
So it's generally easier to get rid of things than it is to add things. So moving forward, say next year, things are working out much better, and we are in a financial place where we're able to continue and things are going well. Are we able to then, say we choose not to do pre-K this year, are we able to then have pre-K again next year? Like restart it again, or is that going to be completely out?
Yeah.
What would that look like?
Yeah, so my, my, my understanding is that yes, so it would be, and I know there's, and I put some motions on the agenda just so we'd have something to write in for folks to look at, but how those motions go will be up to you folks. But yeah, I would see it as a one-year cancellation, and you review it every year. We're not the only school that's looking at doing this. I know for certain that the Glen Falls School District did so last week, and at least one of the pieces of the puzzle for them was the funding, the funding reduction. Another piece of the puzzle was the available technology and the educational environment for pre-kers if all of a sudden you have to go remote. A lot of folks are thinking that there could be a possibility that we're remote again this year, and what's the value of that for a pre-ker? So that, that's their thought process, based on my understanding of their thought process. I'm not putting words in their mouth, but short answer, my understanding is you can cancel it, you can put it back next year.
So my, so I'm just going to add my own personal thoughts into this because I unmuted myself for a minute. Obviously, I don't think it's fiscally responsible at this point to move forward and say, let's, let's try because we don't have anything else to cut from. We literally have no other place to cut from to get those funds in order to do it. And I think moving forward with a pre-K program this year would be fiscally, fiscally irresponsible. And also, again, I do kind of like see that, can you imagine sending however many pre-kers, remote learning? Like, what does that look like? So that's my own personal thoughts.
Other, other? Dan, go ahead, Tom. You go first.
No, I just wanted to echo any of the sentiments. I don't know that we possibly can pull from anywhere to put this on, especially with the fact, I mean, I think it's a decent thought process that there is a possibility that we're going to wind up remote depending on how these first three weeks go. So to have the program going and funding it with $23,000 from somewhere else, and then having it not be optimal for the kids doesn't seem like a wise decision. So I'm in agreement that we probably should not have pre-K this year. Dan, Tom?
Yeah, so Dan, you have 85 students in remote learning. I kind of know this answer, but I think I have to throw it out there to discuss that. If there's going to be a time that we go all remote, right now, we're pretty much going remote three out of five days. Out of those 85 students, I would have to guess 60 of them are coming from the high school, middle school, high school. Is there any savings? And again, I always say that there's not a whole lot of savings to go remote totally in middle school, high school, you know, right now, based on savings of money. Can we get into a discussion on that briefly? Is there savings to do that, correct?
So, so I would say yes. It's going to, it's going to depend on the staff that you use to go remote, right? Because that's where the savings is going to be, because we didn't put any supplies in our budget for anybody. We had, we had to reduce those out, so it's all about staffing. That's the only place you're going to see savings if things go remote. I don't really want to, I don't know, I don't want to elaborate that on too much in an open session.
Yes, I'm sorry, yeah, yes.
But it's going to impact specific people.
Sure.
But that's, that's where your savings would be.
So how many kids out of the 85, though? Is it, am I right, around 16 in the high school, middle school, high school?
Um, look, give me one second to see, because I don't.
Because that's, that's a high percentage, I mean, based on having 200 kids in the middle.
I think Sam, I think Sam signed 44, but I'm not sure.
It's nearly 50/50, 40, 41 or 42 each way. It's nearly 50/50. The last I checked, actually, it was a little bit more. It was like 52 elementary, 48%, like 52% elementary, 48%. Six, twelve school.
Yeah, and it kind of occurs by family, and I, and I, I have the sheet to show you, but it, it contains some information that I'm, I'm not able to show publicly.
Yeah, thank you, Dan. You answered my question, though. I mean, at this point, it's a possibility, but we, a big, full discussion would be needed.
Right, I, so I can say what, what some other, some other school districts have, have talked about, and if they were to go full remote, there could be considerable savings, but that's because you'd be, you'd be reducing staff. Anybody that should, any staff member that wasn't needed to provide the mandated level of remote instruction, you'd have to, you'd have to reduce or eliminate, and as we know, last year when we went remote, we didn't reduce or eliminate anyone. We paid full salary and benefits at that time. And we've had some discussions where if we do end up full remote this year for a period of time, the board absolutely has to have a conversation about, everybody can't remain full salary and full benefits in a period of remote this year. We'll never make it. We'll never make it.
Thank you for your understanding.
Dan, has there been any, like, is there any different reductions for, for districts that are in contingency budget? That's not like, that doesn't make any difference, right?
No, so, so it's a great question. So I am continuing to advocate for there to be something different for districts that have already reduced so much, for districts that are in a contingent budget. Not a lot of traction yet, but just getting started on that conversation now because especially for districts that are going to run out of gas in a certain time throughout the year with no relief. So, so there is a conversation happening. We are leading that conversation, and there's, there's a handful of districts, I would say at least a handful of districts statewide that would be in the same boat as Fort Edward. So I'll talk more about that as it, as it develops for certain, but it isn't like we're not trying. It would be great if they said, you know, certain districts will be 10%, certain it will be this, but I'm, I know that other school districts that have different circumstances will be saying, no way, make it 20 for everybody. And I would understand their point of view, too. We just had to do our best to advocate for, for Fort Edward and for our students and in our community and our, and our staff and faculty to provide what needs to be provided for Fort Edward, and other school districts have to do the same. And in the end, you know, it will be the powers that be that make the final decisions on that, our legislators and our government officials.
Right, okay, thanks.
Yeah, Dan, you'd think it'd be based a little bit more on the percentage of your funds that are coming from state aid. That should be factored in there as well.
Right.
Where we're near the highest.
Right, 20% reduction for us on $11 million budget is 1.5, like I said. I'm sure there's a school district that exists in New York State that has a similar sized student body where 20% of their state aid is $100,000 because they're so property wealthy, you know? So 20% for them is $20,000, and 20% for us is 1.5 million, or there's some disparity there for certain if it's just on 20% across the board. So more, more to come. That's a conversation I'll be having with, with, with some legislators.
Right, I mean, it comes down to equity, and, and the districts that are getting hit the hardest are the ones that need the aid the most, honestly.
Yeah, it's a double punch.
Yeah.
Yeah, double punch, for sure. I, it is not lost on me, and that's one of the conversations. And that actually started on, started with that conversation on Monday, starting to work through that and get to the proper people with the information, and right now I have to get some more, some more financial information together for them so that, so we can really do a good job advocating and sharing the information and talking about how it affects different districts differently. Not that, not that they don't understand the concept of that, but show me the numbers, and then we can go from there, is kind of the answer that I have so far.
But it's only going to happen if it is changing between districts, because Albany is saying they don't have the money. The only way to give us or take less from us is to take more from someone else or give less to someone else. So that's the only way that that's going to pass in any way, shape, or form. So it's got even a second hurdle to climb. Not only will they have to say, we'll do it, but then they have to get others to agree the fact that they're not going to get the same. So it's going to be a monumental task, but hopefully they decide that.
And there's, I'm going to, I'll add one more piece to that, and there's another factor that's, I'm a little bit different for Fort Edward that might make people listen to us, is that we're also, we're also in a merger study. You know, so we're, we're, we're exhausting all avenues, right, to try to do this, to get all the information possible for people to make, for the board to make a decision about things, and then possibly the community to make a decision about things. I don't know that every other district that's in our position would be able to say that, that they've exhausted everything and been talking about it for all of the possibilities. We haven't ruled out any possibilities. I know that's not what some people in our community want to hear, but I think when you're dealing with legislators, sometimes that's exactly what they want to hear, that you're looking at everything, um, to try to do what's best for kids. And, and that means sometimes talking about really difficult things. So we'll, we'll see how it goes, more to come on that.
Well, good luck with that. Um, obviously Carrie's involved in some of that stuff and talking to other people as well.
Correct, yeah, and again, we're very initial right now. Yep, um, so that'll, that'll be moving quickly as, as we, as we get, uh, move into the next couple of weeks until the beginning of school. It's got to move fast, um, otherwise, otherwise we're going to run out of gas. Uh, the, the second discussion item was pre-K through 12 principal posting. Obviously we've got some appointments going on later in the agenda. Uh, one has to do with Mr. Ratty, but I, I am going to, I am going to say that Mr. Ratty is only here for a limited time and the board, um, had mentioned that they'd like me to post the position. And the position of pre-K through 12 principal, um, to post, uh, there's no salary attached to that inside of the current administrator's contract. There is a starting salary attached, but, um, it only talks about those two positions that we had, um, last year and the years previous. So I'm going to need some guidance from, from you folks and I, um, as it has to do with negotiations, um, I'm going to ask that we talk about that a little bit later because that salary, uh, is dictated or, or has to be agreed upon with the Administrators Association at least until there is no more Administrators Association. So we have to have that conversation a little bit later, but that's an integral part of the posting. If, if we want people to apply, we're going to have to tell them what the salary, the salary is for that, that going forward. So I just wanted to have, um, we can have that discussion at least, uh, without going into great detail, we can have a little discussion now or if there's nothing in general that folks want to talk to, we can have that discussion when we get inside of executive session with, um, our school attorney.
I just want to say, Sam, uh, thanks for sticking around for a bit. We all appreciate you very much, very much.
I think we should follow that up with congratulations on your new position.
Yeah.
It'd be good for you.
And Sam, I think you, I apologize if you haven't told everybody publicly. Um, I can't, we talked so much in the last few days. I think you said you were set, but if not, um, sorry.
No, I've, um, I thought I'd talk to some people. Um, it's been a tough decision to make. Um, I've reached out on a, a personal level to quite a few people and not necessarily publicly, but I, I do want to thank the entire community of Fort Edward, students, parents, faculty and staff. It's, um, it's a family. I appreciate all of the opportunities that all of you have afforded me. And, uh, I just want, I just want to thank everyone for everything and I wish everyone, everyone the best going forward. So thank you, thank you all for everything.
Thank you, Sam.
You deserve it, buddy.
Don't worry, we're, we're going to run him ragged for a couple more months. And that's, and that's not a joke and he knows, and he knows it, um, but, uh, but, uh, do we just need to talk about that? I'll leave it at that. And, and we'll talk about it in executive session. So that's, that's what I had for discussion items that, that, that I wanted you to have at least a little conversation, um, in, in public session. But certainly some of that has to occur in executive session as it relates to the, um, employment of specific individuals and, um, contract negotiations.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. Um, I'm going to modify the motion and then put it to a vote. And if we have to, uh, modify it again, we can, but I'm going to put a motion forward to cancel the pre-K program for the 2020, 2021 school year due to funding being withheld by New York State. I need a motion.
Motion.
Anita, Chris second, any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Okay, I didn't hear, I saw a, a yes from James, so I'll put it this way, any noes? Anyone abstaining? Is that Christina abstaining?
Yeah.
And Dan.
Seven, so 7-0-2, Tom?
7-0-2. Okay, moving on to personnel. Item A. Be resolved that the Board of Education, the Fort Edward Union Free School District hereby abolishes the following position in the following tenure areas effective August 31st, 2020. Superintendent is directed to notify the affected staff members of this action. 1.5 pre-K teacher from the elementary teacher tenure area. Need a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Chris and Joe, any discussion? Obviously this is related to the previous action item. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any noes? Any abstentions?
Christina.
Christina and Dan, okay, 7-0-2. Uh, let's see. Be resolved, the Board of Education, the Fort Edward Union Free School District hereby abolishes the following positions in the following areas effective August 31st, 2020. Superintendent is directed to notify the affected staff member of this action. One, uh, FTE teachers aid, I need a motion.
Motion.
Anita. James, any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any noes? Any abstentions? Think I see Dan?
Yep.
Okay, one abstention, 8-0-1.
That was, that was Dan with the abstention, that, sorry, I just want to make sure I got it right.
Yes, that, that abstention, yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you. I know Toby's taking it, but we check each other when we have to.
Tom.
Okay, uh, item C, yes.
Tom, before you, before you read that, uh, we can get into it, just, um, can we get it, go into executive, uh, session to discuss, um, the hirings prior to, or do you want me to wait until you motion and all that before you? I, I, I asked to go in for person, personnel.
So you're saying C, D and E, you'd like to table?
Uh, yes, just, um, yeah, and then we'll, right out, when we come right out of, uh, executive session, we can go on it.
So Todd, you're going to make.
All right, Todd's put forth a motion to, uh, to, to table the, uh, C, D and E. I need a vote on that, obviously Todd's the motion, I need a second.
I'll second.
Anita, all in favor going to exec to discuss C, D and E and table them now?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Okay.
Thank you.
Any, any noes? Anyone abstaining? Okay, so passed, so, uh, we will table those three items and then we will have action taken, uh, likely action taken when we leave, uh, executive. Okay. Somehow my paper's gone a little. Uh, okay, this is a, a second public comment now, right?
Yep, correct. I don't see anyone.
There's nothing in the, in the messages there.
Okay, so, um, I need a motion to enter into executive session.
Tom, Mike Traskis would like to say something. Mike Traskis is here, he spoke up.
Hey, Mike, sure, yeah, go ahead. I don't see him on the screen, but, uh.
Can you see? Sorry. I'm just, sorry, just going back to that, the, the 20% and, um, is there any, do you have any sort of letter that could be distributed that we could just flood somebody's office with?
Yep, so, so not yet. Um, it's a great question. So the, the local superintendents, um, I'm on the advocacy committee with, with all the local superintendents. Um, and we are putting together, uh, documents that we're going to use for advocacy that shows what each school's enacted budget is, what the reduction is and what the percentages of that are, of our total budget, um, as part of the advocacy. Once we have that together, yeah, we'd want to get a letter out that, that community members could, could sign on to, um, to show, uh, to show that this is going to kill our schools. I'll say it that way, I'll be that blunt. Um, so I will get something, uh, Carrie, Carrie and I, I just don't have it yet, uh, because we're trying, we're trying to construct it and it's probably going to have to go, um, to our state, but more importantly to our federal people because the state people can't make the feds give us any money. All they can do is keep asking, um, it's probably going to be going to our federal representatives, um, to, to, to make this happen for us because the state, the state can't, the state can't print any more money. Um, as much as we don't want the federal government to be in any more debt than it already is, the federal government can and does print money all the time, um, to support different things that they want to support. And that's kind of what we're going to have to ask them for this time. So I'll make myself a note, um, to, to get that out on the website as soon as I have it, but it might be just a, a week or two before I have something that's going to go out and we can do it en masse.
Yeah, I think that would be great.
I'm going to put it on.
Thanks for, 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 uh, for asking Carrie and I, I did want to take this moment, I almost forgot to do it. Uh, I probably would have, but thanks to Carrie and Maggie and so many other people who are involved in the Families for Fort Edward and other organizations like the Booster Club that are working every day, posting things on social media, uh, asking people to donate, raising money through selling shirts and, and so many other ways. And there's actually a big event happening, I believe on September 13th at the school where they're going to be raffling off baskets and things like that. So thanks for all the work that everybody's putting in, uh, on that front. Uh, so, uh, I need a motion to enter into executive session to discuss matters referring to the employment of specific individuals and pending litigation. Todd and James, uh, Board of Education members and other individuals invited into executive session are reminded that all matters discussed during executive session must be kept in the strictest confidence. Um, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
I see everyone with an eye there. Um, okay, so we will have to, we will definitely return to public session and it's very likely that we'll be taking action. Uh, so Dan will probably stop the recording now and then we'll switch over to the exec link and then we'll be back here later.
Yeah, just.
Dan?
Um, I, I think that I'll be good with the rest of that, Toby, just to go back to those items, I should be good. I appreciate you being here. Uh, board members, I just want to, if you happen to be using two separate devices for the two different links, please just make sure you shut the meeting off on device one. Um, last time we had some, uh, carry through on, on a microphone, at least for a minute or so. It was nothing that was, um, highly confidential because we hadn't gotten the whole board into the executive session link yet, but just want to make sure I put that reminder out. And yes, I'll stop the recording now. When we come back, I'll, I'll restart the recording, that way the meeting is captured for anybody who wants to watch it and we'll get it online, um, as, as quickly as possible. So board members, I will send you the link to executive session. Everybody else, um, we'll see you when we come back out. I heard we're back, we're back to public, but that, that we may have to have one more remote meeting because we, we're probably going to have to have a special meeting next week for appointments. But starting with our September 14th meeting, we'll be in person for, uh, board members only and be pushing the meeting out to the public, um, through, through streaming. And it will be a good day for us to be back in school because the 14th will also be the first day for our children and staff to be back in school together. And then once we, uh, get started there, I would hope that by October, we could be trying to do something here, maybe in a large space where we could have public participation, um, together. And, and all that will depend on if the governor tells us we have to do something different. But right now the order for remote meetings runs out September 5th. But we are recording again and, uh, thanks for hanging out, folks. Tom, back to you.
Yes, okay. Uh, so, uh, I need a motion for personnel items C, D and E. Anita, second. Joe, any discussion? And Dan, can you mute microphones or can I ask again for folks who aren't board members to please mute their microphones?
I mean, it's a second, I can, but I'm, I'm having some struggles here tonight.
Oh, that's better. Uh, whatever happened, uh, someone muted their microphone. Okay, so we have two motions on the table, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, uh, any noes? Anyone abstaining?
And Dan, and Dan did not make it back across, correct?
No, he's here, he's here.
Oh, Dan, all right, thanks, Dan, so we, that means we are 9-0-0.
Correct, correct.
And the motion was for C, D.
D and E, that's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, so, um, yeah, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Joe?
Second.
Was it Dan, Dan?
Yep.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Late tonight on that, uh.
Hey, I was letting other people have it.
9-0-0.
9-0 on adjournment, yeah.
Sounds good, thanks everybody, have a great night, I'm going to stop.
Thanks folks, great work tonight.
Wait, we have a question there, Jessica Jarvis has a question in the chat.
Sure, we'll hear it, go ahead, Jessica.
Yeah, the forum is not open. That just came up and I'm going to check on that tomorrow and see what's going on. Um, I apologize for that, I was not aware, but I was made aware just about 10 minutes ago. So thank you for bringing it to our attention as well.